Okay, we are ready to get started. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council. Today is Monday, August 26, 2024. Calling this meeting to order and providing notice that at this regular meeting, the City Council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. Can we have roll call?
Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Aslan.
President.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember House. Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
Okay. Councilmember Sweet, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pleasure. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilmember Mathi- Councilmember Harris, would you read the mission statement?
Yes, thank you. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews, would- Are you in a place where you can read the land acknowledgement? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of- The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this land, this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacy, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. All right. Next up is open call to the public. This is your opportunity to address council about something that is not on tonight's agenda. Open call to the public appears twice on our agenda, once at the beginning and once at the end. In the beginning, we limit comments to 30 minutes. And if we go over, then the remaining comments will be taken at the end. Council cannot respond to you or answer questions, ask questions. And there is a timer. You have three minutes, and you can see it when you're up here speaking. So we're going to start with Genevieve Partry and David McIntyre.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Genevieve Partry, and I have Dave McIntyre here from Economic Vitality. I'm from Sustainability. We just want to do a quick public comment about the Green Business Bootcamp. We're starting the second cohort in Flagstaff, so really excited about that. We had our first cohort back in April, so we're looking for a few more businesses to participate. So we'd like to let the public know, as well as council, know that this opportunity is open right now. It is offered by Local First Arizona in partnership with the City Sustainability and Economic Vitality divisions. The goal for the program is to reduce energy use and water use while also meeting climate action goals, so both having economic as well as climate benefits to Flagstaff businesses and the Flagstaff community, as well as reduce long-term costs to businesses. And we're also working with Carmo Labs from NAU to help provide greenhouse gas emissions analyses as part of this as well. So, super exciting. And then I'll pass it over to Dave.
So as mentioned, we're pretty excited about the second cohort. And the bootcamp is going to start on September 10th, and it goes for about eight weeks. There are seven virtual sessions with businesses that are from around the state, and then two in-person sessions to kind of create a little sense of community with the businesses that are specific to Flagstaff. And we're going to follow up with an email that includes links to more information about the bootcamp and an application link, so please feel free to forward. We're, of course, doing outreach ourselves as well. And additionally, we wanted to let you know that we'll be back in front of you in October with some of the participants from the first cohort to talk about what they received as benefit and how everything went. And thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tom Pearson.
Thank you, Mayor Daggett and council members, for the opportunity to speak to you today. I am here today with my fellow residents of Mead Lane because our homes remain constantly threatened by flooding. This month alone, torrential rains twice flooded our street. Once again, Laura and I were out hauling sandbags and cleaning debris from storm drains as the water level rose around us. As I'm sure you know, a project to replace our undersized storm drains was approved 11 years ago, yet the crucial funding has been repeatedly delayed, leaving us vulnerable to the recurring threat of flooding. We all appreciate the progress being made on the Schultz Creek culvert. It's a significant step in protecting our community from burn scar runoff. However, the threat of flooding on Mead Lane remains. Many residents upstream of us have built cinder block walls around their property. While protecting their homes, these walls have inadvertently diverted stormwater toward us, turning Mead Lane into Lake Mead. Ed Shank has told us that a FEMA grant might come through to help us in two years. This delay is unacceptable. We need you to authorize work to start immediately. Public safety and infrastructure, as you know, are your two sacred duties. Please act now to save our neighborhood from the ongoing threat of floodwaters in our homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Kessler.
Hello. Good afternoon. I just walked in the door, so I'm trying to get out of the out- out of my car and into City Hall here, mentally. Yeah, we had some more flooding, which my husband just spoke about. Our street is comprised mostly of elderly residents. I think it was in 2013 that our- the new storm drains that we so badly need were approved for funding, but the funding never came. It's been 11 years. The flooding that we just had had nothing to do with the wildfire burn scar. This is something just cloud bursts in the area that come down. We're still affected. And I purchased my home on Mead Lane in 2015, and I asked multiple real estate agents, is this in a flood zone? We're not in a flood zone because the problem here is the infrastructure. The storm drains are too low or too, too small. Everybody knows this. I don't know, you know, we pay our taxes. It says right in your mission statement for the town that the residents are supposed to be protected by the town. I believe that. I don't have it here in front of me, but I know that's a part in the mission statement. We're not protected. We're excluded from that. Mead Lane has been excluded from your mission statement. We pay our taxes. We pay our water bills. We got slapped with a higher storm water fee. We pay that, even though we're victims, and it's not our fault. Why is City Hall excluding us and not helping us? We need help. I know there's a general fund. This is not news. I've been, I was up here last year pleading for new storm drains. I just talked to Ed Shank a week or two ago after the flood. He said we have to wait another two years so that you can find funding for this project. How much? I don't believe it anymore. We've been told, wait, wait, wait. No, we don't want to wait anymore. You're not listening to what, what it's like to every time a storm cloud comes along, and we have to rush home or pray that we don't get flooded. It's not fair to the community. It's not fair to our street. The street behind us is being impacted. We even tried to start an organization for adaptation to please put it back in to the carbon net- the carbon neutrality plan. It was rejected. So now we have to adapt for doing the job that the city should be doing. My neighbor, we would have been flooded again if my neighbor hadn't pulled money out of her own pocket, my elderly neighbor, and built a trench through her property to alleviate the flooding from our street. We're the ones paying and doing the work. My neighbors are out there in floodwaters. They're endangering their lives. By out there, I'm not endangering their lives, but they have to clear the storm drains themselves with their own rakes. We do it every time it rains.
Thank you.
It's dangerous.
Thank you.
Please listen.
Tia Hatten.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Tia Hatten, and I'm a Sustainability Coordinator with the city. I have a brief announcement regarding the Neighborhood Sustainability Grant Program. The Sustainability Office and Sustainability Commission are pleased to announce that the annual application period for the Neighborhood Sustainability Grant Program is now open. Applications are due by September 30th. Neighborhood sustainability grants fund creative projects that enhance sustainability and promote healthy lifestyles through community partnerships. Individuals, community groups, educational groups, nonprofits, and businesses with project ideas within Flagstaff city limits are eligible to apply. This year, the grant program, which is funded through the environmental management fee, has a total of $75,000. Applicants can apply for awards of up to $7,500 towards their community sustainability projects in the following categories: Building Energy Efficiency, Climate Action, Food, Public Health, Resilience, Transportation, and Waste Prevention. We are hosting a grant workshop and info session tomorrow, Tuesday, August 27th, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM, in person at the Downtown Community Library Room and virtually on Microsoft Teams. This event will also include information about the Beautification in Action Grant. We will also have virtual grant support hours throughout September, where we'll be on hand to answer any questions and offer technical assistance. Applications can be submitted online via Survey Monkey, emailed, or paper applications are available for pickup and drop off at our office and both libraries. This year, we are also excited to have Spanish-language grant materials, thanks to the services of a local translator. All grant materials, the workshop registration form, details about support hours, past project examples, and my contact information can be found on our website at www dot flagstaff dot az dot gov forward slash NSG. We would love your support in sharing information about this grant opportunity. I will follow up with you all shortly with an informational email and flyer that can be shared out. Thank you.
Thank you. My apologies if I do not get this last name correctly. Anne Slobodjikoff. Slobodjikoff? Slobodjikoff? Is that even close?
Well, vaguely. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Anne Slobodjikoff. I'm one of the Mead Lane residents. And my house actually did flood in 2022, and we very much appreciate the efforts that have been made on the Schultz Creek watershed with the culvert and so forth. However, because, well, partly because many people have built cement walls along 180, it has forced a huge volume of water just from downpours to come into Mead Lane, and the drainage system is woefully, woefully inadequate. And my whole property flooded again, twice, just this season. And so we really, really need to have this addressed ASAP. And I would like to request that the General Fund provide money, and that then, when the grant comes through, whenever it comes through, be reimbursed with those funds because we can't wait another two years. And this is costing us huge amounts of money, huge efforts on people who are over 80, as my neighbor Gail is. I'm in my late 70s. And to be carting around sandbags and clearing drains ourselves is really exceedingly difficult. And we really need the city's help with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Reed.
Thank you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor and council members for letting us speak. I am also a member of the Mead Lane Avengers, as one of our people calls us, after the pipeline fire flood. This flooding business on Mead is not a new phenomenon, not even since the pipeline fire flood. For decades, this street has flooded. And the, I've seen maps of where the water drain drains on Mead, and the, the access point seems to be my driveway. And for decades, when we had a cloud burst, the street would flood, and mostly it would come through my driveway and into my garage. And, and my friends here have mentioned these cloud, recent cloud bursts. If it had not, if I had not been living behind sandbags, as I still am, then it would have, my driveway flooded. It would have gone into my garage again, possibly not into my house. I hope not. But I was out of my house for two months. And, and it's true, that was a pipeline fire flood, but it's exacerbated by the, the, the basic problem with the drainage on Mead. And I just want to, I'm the one who also built the trench in my yard, and I did spend thousands of dollars of my own money just to hopefully help, help drain, drain my property. So I would like to hear also that we are put at the top of somebody's list because I've complained for years and years about the drainage on Mead. They tore up Talkington and Crescent and realigned them, but all it did was kind of smooth the road for the waters to come down all the faster. And the same is true of, pardon me, of the drainage on 180. We do need it done really fast. I'm over 80 years old, and I have to climb over sandbags to get in and out of my house. And if I fall and break my neck, I'm going to blame the city for it because, you know, I, I don't know what else to do. So I would really appreciate hearing from the City Council that something will be done sooner than two years from now. Thank you.
Thank you. Kengata Callan.
Good evening, Madam Chair, council, council members, city manager, and team. I'm Kengata Callan, the Executive Director of Southside Community Association. I'm here to provide a brief update on our recent activities and upcoming initiatives. First, the Cleo Murdoch Center Park construction. The city has begun construction on Ms. Cleo Murdoch City Park with completion expected by mid-September. We're excited to host a grand opening celebration during the first weekend of October, which will also feature a wellness community event to promote health and well-being in our neighborhood. We're going to be celebrating Councilmember Deb Harris. I'd like to take a moment to recognize Councilmember Deb Harris on her unwavering dedication to the Murdoch Center. Her leadership has been vital, and we will be honoring her contributions during the grand opening event. We've launched the resilience hub, so that has been successful, which focuses on embracing our community's ability to respond to changes, challenges, excuse me. Our first event in partnership with Pinnacle Prevention, we addressed food insecurities in Flagstaff, and it was a significant step towards building stronger community. We also are going to be supporting the Northern Arizona Community Fridge. We've partnered with the nonprofit Well Deserve to establish Northern Arizona's first community fridge at the Murdoch Center. This initiative will provide food resources for those in need and is critical addition to our efforts in combat of hunger. The youth and education support. Our summer youth camp support for the Boys and Girls Club of Flagstaff was a success. We are committed to continuing support for after-school programs like Lowell Kinsey Elementary despite recent funding cuts. And then lastly, our partnership with Northern Arizona University. We, as a community, have committed to deepen our partnership with NAU, creating opportunities for mutual engagement. Our community members are invited to attend NAU home games and functions, and we look forward to NAU's involvement in our community events as well. This collaboration reflects a shared commitment to fostering stronger connections between the university and our neighborhood. Next steps. Looking ahead, we're finalizing plans for the October grand opening and wellness event, continuing to expand the resilience hub, and deepening partnerships with local organizations to better serve our community. And in conclusion, the Southside Community Association remains committed to preserving our unique character of our neighborhoods while enhancing the prosperity of Flagstaff. I appreciate your ongoing support and look forward to working together to achieve these goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Dr. Emily Davalos.
Please forgive me because I did not plan this. I did not plan to be speaking here. I have lived in Flagstaff for 25 years. I earned four degrees from NAU. I have lived in Plaza Vieja for 10 years. I've been very involved with helping with Plaza Vieja. In fact, for the last nine years, I have shoveled an entire block of communal sidewalk because my street is so dangerous to walk on. And yet, as I'm walking to Winter Sun to grab things before I move away from Flagstaff for 25 years, Councilmember McCarthy feels it is acceptable to violently place his hands on me and assault me because he doesn't like what I have to say. Because I told him it is disgusting to equate Palestinians with terrorists on the ceasefire petition. He didn't like that, so he assaulted me. A council member assaulted me just now. This is unacceptable. Why does a grown man think it's acceptable to violently place his hands on a woman because he doesn't like what she has to say? This is not acceptable. It is inexcusable. And I hope all of the women on here tell him that it is not acceptable for him to violently place his hands on a woman because he doesn't like what she has to say. I am disgusted by you, Councilmember McCarthy, and it is unacceptable for you to assault me and put your hands on me. You should be ashamed of yourself. You are a disgusting disgrace of a council member.
The reason I was late to today's meeting is I was filling out police reports about this. I'm speaking now. You had your turn. I was filling out police reports. So I'm not going to get into this. This is a police and city attorney matter. I will say this much. What you just heard was bullshit.
No, you assaulted me, and I have a witness that test, that told the police that you violently put your hands on me.
All right.
Thank God a witness saw you assault me. I am pressing charges for you assaulting me. It is not okay for you to tell me I'm lying, and it's not okay for you to speak back to me at public participation unless I said something was not true. You can watch the body camera. There is a witness. You violently put your hands on me, and it is unacceptable.
Dr. Davalos. Thank you.
I pushed you-
He is not allowed to speak back to me.
Councilmember McCarthy, please, let's move on.
I want to just say really quickly.
He is not allowed to do this at public participation.
I pushed her away because she was being aggressive.
Councilmember McCarthy, please.
That's it.
Let's, let's move on. All right. Next up, we have a proclamation for Smart Week. So if I could have my Moms Demand Action volunteers come up, that would be wonderful. And council, meet me at the edge. Guns are the number one killer of children and teens in the United States. The City of Flagstaff is committed to creating a safe environment, contributing to the safety and well-being of our children. Almost every single day, a child gets their hands on a gun and unintentionally kills or injures themselves or someone else in the United States. Research shows that one of the best ways to protect children and teens from accessing guns is to implement secure firearm storage practices. Research shows that the most effective way to prevent children from, from accessing firearms is making sure all guns are stored unloaded, locked, and separate from ammunition. There are steps that we can all take, gun owners and non-gun owners alike, to make sure kids can't access guns and put themselves and others in danger. An estimated 54% of gun owners don't lock all of their guns securely, and an estimated 4.6 million children live in a home with at least one unlocked and loaded gun in the United States. When guns aren't properly stored, tragedy can strike, whether it's a child finding a firearm and injuring or killing themselves, or someone else, or someone stealing it and using it to commit crime in our communities. Protecting public safety in the communities they serve is a mayor's highest responsibility. Schools, hospitals, state agencies, and community organizations are committed to their crucial role in reducing injuries and deaths by promoting secure gun storage and safety. Whereas, Smart Week raises awareness and promotes efforts to educate the public about secure gun storage, the City of Flagstaff commends Be Smart, a program developed by the Everytown for Gun Safety Support Fund and all involved in their endeavor to keep communities safe. Now, therefore, I, Becky Daggett, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim August 26th through 30th as Smart Week in Flagstaff, Arizona.
All right. We thank Mayor Daggett and the City Council members for this important proclamation, for inviting us here today, and help us to bring awareness to the importance of secure gun storage and keeping our children safe. Smart Week is all about educating communities on the simple steps that everyone, gun owners and non-gun owners alike, can take to prevent gun violence. SMART stands for Securing Guns in Homes and Vehicles, Modeling Responsible Behavior Around Guns. Ask about the presence of unsecured firearms in the homes that your child visits. Recognize the role of guns in suicide, and tell your peers to be smart. Smart Week is a community-wide effort. Change happens every day through meaningful conversation with friends, family, neighbors, and community leaders. As we start the school year, let's normalize conversations about gun safety and spread the Be Smart message far and wide. We left some printed materials in the back, both in English and Spanish. Feel free to check those out and take with you. And you can check out the website, besmartforkids.org. Thank you.
I just wanted to give Mayor Daggett a poster in English and Spanish with our Be Smart Steps.
All right. Next, we have August Work Anniversaries.
Thank you, Mayor Daggett. We decided to change up the format a little bit, make it a little bit more festive, since we've been using the last background for a little while. So again, these are our August Work Anniversaries that we're celebrating today. So for our first year, we have employees who are in community development, water services, our police department, as well as recreation. A few more to share with you. Again, continuing with recreation, library, as well as a maintenance worker. So moving on to our fifth year anniversary, our- So moving on to our fifth year anniversary, our first is Andrew Holes. He works in our Management Services Division as a buyer. We've got Kelsey, who's a senior GIS analyst, celebrating her fifth year in information We've got Merle Morgan, who's one of our recreation leaders within our Prose Division. And here we have Manny Rivera. He is one of our employees in facilities, part of Public Works, celebrating his fifth year as well. Will Dean Rodriguez is one of our meter technicians as part of our Management Services team. You might recognize this gentleman, our city manager, Mr. Clifton, also celebrating his fifth year. Moving on to our 10-year anniversaries, we have Chris Denham. He's one of our fire captains. We've got James Devini, who's one of our firefighters. Casey Gonzalez, he's one of our fire captain paramedics. And Anthony Matthews, a firefighter, also celebrating 10 years. Felicia is one of our librarians, celebrating 10 years as well. Moving to 20-year anniversaries, we've got Officer George Shorman, as well as Police Sergeant Rube. So congratulations to all of these individuals who are celebrating their work anniversary this month of August. Thanks for allowing me to share this with you today.
Thank you, and a round of applause for all of these employees. Thank you for sticking with the City of Flagstaff. All right, next up, we have Council Liaison Reports. So, let's start with Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Over our break, we still had our committee meetings, and one of the highlights was attending the Indigenous Code Talkers Celebration over at the Aquaplex. For those who may not know, our Indigenous brothers and sisters, Navajo, Hopi, and several others that I don't remember, sorry, 29 started the group, and we had 400 altogether that helped us during World War II to develop a code, and it was fascinating to hear how the code was developed and how it came to be, and helped us win World War II. So that was a highlight of my time.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
I just want to echo Councilmember Matthews. We were both there, and it was a room full of people, and you could have heard a pin drop. He was just so captivating and told the story with so much warmth and pride for the work that he and his fellow.
He's 96.
Yeah, he's 96 years old, and he did not miss a beat. And so for kids who have not heard of this, we should do something to make sure that every child in this community knows the contribution that the Code Talkers made to World War II, because it was really fascinating to hear that, and I'll never forget that one. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Good afternoon, everyone. I do not have much to report. I did want to mention that last night, the mayor and I attended the 18-year celebration for the Jewish Community Center. That was an absolutely fabulous time. It was wonderful to mix and mingle with that community and participate with them during their awards ceremony, where they honored some of their greatest fundraisers and community members in terms of volunteerism and heroism and activities. We also got to see a very talented, globally famous mentalist work his magic with the crowd. It was a lot of fun. I really appreciated the opportunity to be in community with that group last night. That's all I have for you right now, Mayor.
Thank you. I will add regarding the Code Talkers that there are only three living Navajo Code Talkers left. All right, so the Commission on Inclusion and Adaptive Living is going to have a table at the Disability Resources Fair that's going to be held at the High Country Conference Center on October 5. It's a Saturday, it starts at 10:00. I think it goes until 2:00, and I will be, of course, sharing additional information about that. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the council-sponsored band concert at Heritage Square. I went to the employee picnic, which was a lot of fun. And I attended the Transportation Commission, but they didn't have a quorum, so that was a very short meeting. But I did attend the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee meetings. I'm also very pleased to say that Metro Plan representatives and I attended the State Transportation Board to advocate for the Butler Complete Streets Conversion. The board approved the city's $2.4 million SMART fund application. So with that, the $12 million project is now entirely funded by federal and state funds. That is really good news. Thank you.
Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to save my update for next week, so stay tuned.
Councilmember House?
I feel like I should save my update for next week. Just very quickly, I attended the Commission on Diversity Awareness meeting last week. We had great conversation about their continued work and hoping to bring forward some initiatives on their behalf in the coming weeks as we have more opportunity to discuss those. Other than that, this past week, I was able to attend the Arizona Governors Conference on Tourism and serve on a panel where they did a live listening session and speak to the key messaging that came out of Flagstaff as part of that presentation towards the reveal of the new state brand of Vibrant Arizona, which spoke to the storytelling, the innovation, the creativity, and the connectedness of our Arizona communities. I was also able to attend and represent the city at the Lumberjack launch this past week, welcoming the incoming class of 2028, and speaking briefly with them on their membership and their role as part of the City of Flagstaff. So just excited to welcome the students back and see how they will contribute to the ongoing conversations about making our city better. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving down to Item 7A, Consideration of Appointments. This is to the Commission on Diversity Awareness. There are three appointments. One is for a term expiring September 2025, and the other, there are two, for terms expiring September 2027. And, okay, Councilmember Matthews, you make the first one.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to just say that the applicants for this commission were all so very impressive. This was really, really hard. I just kept reading through what they had written on their application, and they all just would bring so much. I wish we could just elect them all, because this was, I think, one of my hardest to narrow down because of just how well-qualified and how passionate they were about serving on this commission. I knew that I'd be first, but I did have three choices. And so I decided, after reviewing all of them, to nominate Emmanuel Hernandez, because he is the program manager for the Downtown Business Alliance, and I thought it was important to have that additional connection and voice for our diversity awareness committee to also have a direct ear to our downtown and not just city councils. So I'm nominating Emmanuel Hernandez, due a term of expiring September 27.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, Vice Mayor, you are next.
Yeah, I have two options here available to choose from. I'm hoping both of them will get taken care of, but I guess that's not up to me. I'm going to prioritize Sandra Darling-Roberts for a term expiring in 2027.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to reiterate what was said by Ms. Matthews, that all candidates are very well-qualified. So I would like to make a nomination for one appointment for a term expiring in September of 2025, and I want to nominate Mendy Reisenberg.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. All right, moving down to the Consent Agenda. So all matters under the Consent Agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine unless a member of the City Council expresses a desire at the meeting to remove an item from the Consent Agenda for discussion. It will be enacted by one motion approving the recommendations listed on the agenda. Unless otherwise indicated, expenditures approved by Council are budgeted items. And Councilmember Harris, I understand you'd like to pull one of the items.
I would like to pull Agenda Item D. D is in dog.
All right, we will pull that out for separate discussion. Councilmember McCarthy?
I would like to pull out Items B and C, Bravo and Charlie.
All right, we'll pull those three. Can I get a motion? Hold on just a second. My apologies. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of Items D, B, and C?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Harris, would you like to start off a discussion about Item Number D, or Letter D?
Yes, I'm sure that my colleagues probably read the same email that I read, and sometimes when things are kind of put to you in just straightforward, it gives you a different perspective. I do want people to know here tonight that I am not going to try and block the two vehicles that are up for discussion in Item D, but I do want us to think about the perception that our community has when we spend $168,000, $168,494.41, on two vehicles. I understand our carbon neutrality plan, and I understand what we're trying to do. Evidently, there are members of our community who do not. And so I think it would behoove us to make sure that people are on the same page. Otherwise, these are going to be the kinds of things that get in the way of us doing things that is good for our city. And I know that 72,000 people plus are not going to agree on every single thing, but these are big items, and for whatever reason, people don't understand what it is that we're trying to do. And I would like for our Sustainability Department to really make an effort, more than what they're already doing, because I know you guys are doing a whole bunch, but I would really like for them to make an effort to perhaps do more education and to also, I guess, just inform the community when these kinds of things are coming open. I don't know how that works, city manager, but I just think that we've got to do better. We've got to do better, because otherwise, the next big thing that comes up, people are going to block it because they think you're wasting money.
Thank you, Councilmember. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Harris, for those comments in pulling this item from the Consent Agenda. As I'm speaking here, I will invite staff down to the podium, Mayor, with your consent, just to give a very brief background on this and help explain how we got to this outcome. To the last point made, Councilmember Harris, efforts are being taken to up our game on the outreach. I believe a meeting has been offered to the author of the email stating concerns about this procurement, and we will indeed follow through on that and any other measures we can take to better outreach on this very important topic. But with that said, I would invite staff to come up and, if it's okay, Mayor, give you a little bit of background on this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Councilmember Harris?
I'm sorry, City Manager. I don't necessarily, well, my colleagues might, but I read through all the information. I understand why we're doing what we're doing. I totally get it. The point that I'm making is that there are members in our community who do not get it. So if having the staff will explain what happened, and hopefully people are watching, or they can come back and listen to this later would be helpful, that would be great. And so I would encourage them, you know, them to go ahead and do that. So thank you.
That is indeed the intent. When we're at the podium presenting to Council, we are presenting to the community. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I hope you enjoyed your break. Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Director. This will be a bit of a tag team in response, and I do hope the Council has had an opportunity to see the response that staff crafted in response to the citizens' concern. I know it was lengthy, but I thought that it would be beneficial to really lay out the various elements of this particular discussion. I would like to invite some of my coworkers up to also assist in this conversation. With that said, I would like to offer a comment that Flagstaff is not unique at this time. A lot of government agencies are feeling this transitional pressure, or stretch, if you will, in converting of its fleet. A lot of the dynamics that are at play, as you noted, in our response to the citizens' concern are really embedded in the requested use of a vehicle, availability of vehicles, timeline of procuring of the vehicles, and so forth. I assure you that we are working very hard to continue that education. Councilmember Harris, thank you for that, and it will be an ongoing job. We also have that education to do internally and working to right-size vehicles for the job. So this is a collective effort, by all means. It's not just sustainability leading this initiative to advance the electrification of our fleet. My hope is that we have an opportunity to keep having these very transparent conversations with our community members and the Council. The one thing I do want to point out before I ask Jen Brown to join me is that we have done that thorough fleet electrification assessment that the Council heard before the break. We know the financial models are beneficial to the city organization and therefore our community in the long term. That doesn't mean that this time where we're at right now is easy or comfortable. This is a long-term investment, and what we know is that those initial steps can be very difficult. We are also capitalizing on the tax incentives that are currently available for vehicles, and you will see an additional response from staff to and you will see an additional response from staff to follow up on the citizens' email here shortly. And thank you for all the folks behind me that have worked to provide very detailed information. My hope is that I can ask Jen Brown to join me to really walk through that process of how the city procures fleet. And there's a lot of moving parts in trying to secure vehicles at the right time and availability, as well as local availability. So, if I may? Jen? Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Welcome back. We missed you all. So, yes, it is, but we did enjoy our break. I can tell you that. So I'd just like to walk you through the process of when staff says we need to get a replacement. So in this case, we'll give you code enforcement. They needed, they have an older Prius, it has reached its end of life, so we need to replace the vehicle. What then they do is they fill out a form, it goes over to Fleet Services, Fleet Services does a full check of the vehicle, see if it's met its extended life period, and then it's scored. Once it's scored, it goes over to the Fleet Management Committee. Fleet Management Committee reviews it, they say yes or no, it does need to be replaced. In this case, it did get approved to be replaced. And then in speaking with the actual user, we talked to them, Fleet Manager Nate, he'll talk to them and say, you know, is this vehicle meeting your needs? They'll talk to us and say, well, you know, the Prius isn't really exactly the best fit for what we do, for our job duties, because they actually do go off-road, they go out into the forest, they pick up trash, litter, they also go and help out some of the community members with some of their areas that do need some cleaning up that haven't met with code enforcement. So really, a Prius is not suitable for him. So, in conversations, we said, well, we also need to make sure that we're meeting our EV-first policy. Have you looked at EVs? Obviously, you know, this is an education piece, it's kind of scary, I don't know if I want an EV. Well, Facilities actually got an EV, and we said, why don't you try this out for two weeks? See how you like it? So they had a, Facilities had a Chevy Silverado EV, and to Reggie's surprise, he actually liked it. Wasn't really that bad. We have enough infrastructure for he's going to be able to have it charged, he's going to take it at the end of his shift, plug it in, it'll work fine. That meets his needs of being able to haul his vehicle, actually even having a bed of a vehicle, the bed, he'll be able to pull, put trash in there, take it to the landfill. So it has multiple uses, and it was kind of a win-win as far as meeting our EV-first policy. So then, what we did is Fleet, Nate, the Fleet Manager, he was able to contact a couple of dealerships. At that time, Flagstaff GM didn't have one, and he was able to contact somebody that said, I actually have two vehicles on the lot, ready to go. So, some history back, Facilities ordered, Facilities and actually Streets ordered two Silverado EVs. The last time they ordered it, it took two years to receive the vehicle. So Nate going, oh, wow, you have it on, so let's go ahead and move this forward. Reggie approved of it, and this is where we're at with conversations and, you know, trying to educate the community, and we're trying to, we're kind of in the middle, trying to, it's a balance, right? Because we need to make sure that we have infrastructure, we're being fiscally responsible, and we're also meeting the carbon neutrality plan. So, any questions?
Council, questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Nicole? So would someone like to make a motion? One way or the other?
I'll move to adopt Item D or to, whatever we're doing, yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, moving on to B and C, Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just had a pretty routine question about this. Both of these deal with plat approvals for new neighborhoods, and I just, especially in the context of, we heard some comments about flooding in neighborhoods earlier today. My question is, is did engineering look at the flood map and the flood potential, and do they have a stormwater retention basin? Do they need it, et cetera? I think you know where I'm going. Can you comment, please?
Yeah, so to start that, yes, Stormwater does review the preliminary plat, the civil plat, or the civil plans and the final plat as well. In the case of Timber Sky Block Five, which is 8B, there is detention basin on, I apologize, I forget which tract, tract K, as well as on-lot, LID, or low-impact development.
All right, I think that answers my question. Unless anybody else has a question, I'll make a motion. Mayor, I move that we approve Items B and C.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion?
I just want to thank you for coming and providing that info. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. And we are moving on from the consent agenda to discussion items. Discussion on proposed amendment to the professional services contract between the city and Taros Health for the operation of the Community Alliance Response and Engagement Unit.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mark Galer, your Fire Chief, just want to introduce a few folks that'll be here, subject matter experts on this topic, and they'll be assisting me. I've been running through a PowerPoint presentation just to kind of frame the issue, and then it's all about discussion with the council. Are we making sense to the things that we're proposing, you know, resonate with you all? And we want to be very caring, very intentional in how we make adjustments to a program that's extremely successful. And so, if I can, I'll queue up, a more polished speaker would have had this done already. Thanks. I'll queue up the discussion, and just, this is just an important factoid for us to start with. So we have diverted 2,663 incidents since the inception of the CARE unit. Those are incidents that a big red truck would have went to, and their options on how to deal with the client who was not having an emergency, their options would have been limited. Then essentially, it's, don't do anything, that's rarely an option, take them to the hospital, and they don't want to go, and get the police involved and possibly lead to incarceration. And so we were looking, and we have been looking for a different approach to this very Flagstaff unique problem for quite some time. And so, just to walk us through a little bit of the discussion, we've been trying to address the efforts of special needs populations for decades in this community. When I first came to work here 11 years ago, it was a theme then that the community had been struggling with for at least a decade prior. What do we do to try to divert non-emergency calls out of the 911 system for a very, I'll say prevalent, type of call? It's not an anomaly. They're significant in their occurrence. And so, the CARE unit is our, I'll say, our most recent example and our best example, because we've had a, and I'll share with you some of the history of that, we've had other well-intentioned attempts that just didn't have the effectiveness of the CARE and did not present the opportunities that are presented now. And so, in its simplest form, the idea here is to amend the contract, to approve, to improve the staffing of the CARE unit, to maximize benefits to our clients, and minimize adverse impacts to fire department staffing. And that's just on a 30,000-foot level, that's what we're trying to do, and it's such a, it really is a light-hands approach, not a wholesale change in the way we operate. So, a couple of thought processes I wanted to just present to you all before we open up the discussion, and the path to success is the first one. This is just something I put together to kind of illustrate that the community has really been trying to deal with putting the right tools into a response to the right customers to meet their needs. And so, since 2004, the idea that we have a lot of low-acuity work in addition to having a standing workforce, firefighters that are doing emergency medicine and firefighting, structural firefighting and wildland firefighting, in addition to that, we needed to put resources in place for low-acuity work. And so that was really kind of the basis of what I would say, my information about the history of when we tried to do something different, when we tried to do an adaptive response. In 2014, we actually had a great project, and we learned a lot from it, and we were able to partner with NAU, we had interns onboard, and we put up a CART unit, that's what we called it then, and that CART unit was attempting to begin to provide a more specialized response to this very unique problem in our community. That was, the cool part about working on that project was, we had some interns from NAU.
I wanted to let you know that we're sharing your draft presentation and not the final one that's attached to the agenda, so Stacy's going to share the next one. If you want to just escape out of that, she'll pull up the one that's attached to the agenda.
I would love to do that.
Thanks, Jac.
Yeah.
One more back. My apologies.
The table.
There we go.
Thank you. I wonder if this one's as good as the first one? We'll find out. I apologize for that. So, the CART was the first attempt to try to do something that was a little bit more unique, not necessarily firefighters, but definitely, it was a great program in the context of providing data for us about what the community problem actually looked like. The NAU interns wrote their master's paper, and that was published, and we were able to utilize that to kind of migrate to what the next step was. For us, the part-time issue was hard to overcome. The fire department got into a kind of a vicious cycle of recruit part-timers, and we recruited a cadre of them, and then only to lose them as they pursued careers in the fire service or in emergency medicine, and we found ourselves in a vicious recruit train, put on, you know, onboard, and then start all over again. And so, not sustainable. The other piece that we learned from that, we thought, well, let's try what we called CART 2.0. We put full-time civilian members on that piece of equipment. Again, attrition became a problem, and then job satisfaction. We put a paramedic on there, hoping that the expanded scope of practice might give us more options for the clients. It didn't. Wrong tool. So we continued on, and in 2019, there was a parallel effort with the fire departments where the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council took a look and went to other states and other communities to look for best practices on how to deal with, some of you may have been involved in that. And so, at the same time that was occurring, we, the fire department, had consulted with the behavioral health Dr. Alana Brunascini, who kind of helped us out, and she kind of pointed out what the flaw had been for us in the past. You keep sending firefighters to behavioral health emergencies and changing the vehicle they're sent on and expecting different results. She said it much more brutally than that, because I've known her a long time, but that's exactly what she said. It's not, so, but it was, in fact, that was the missing link, is we're sending the wrong tool. And so we came up with what we called White Paper that we presented, had that kind of sitting around until it became a timely discussion, and then council picked it up, and in 2022, we had a solicitation where we were able to enter into a tremendous relationship with Taros and stand up the CARE unit. And so now, as we kind of come through the extension of the contract, the contract anticipates two one-year extensions, we come to you with what we have learned on how we might make the unit more efficient, more effective, and continue to improve the tool that we're sending to the incident. And so, that's kind of the, next slide, please. Am I driving here?
No.
All right. I like it, safer. So we'll go to continuous improvements, next slide, please, that's just a bumper. So, the idea for us, as we came together, sat down collaboratively with the Taros team, and really talked to people who are closest to the service, the people who are out there and are providing client services from the CARE and are very familiar with it, and we thought, what can we do as we approach this contract extension to make recommendations to improve the unit even more? It's very important that we maintain the mission to reduce arrests and hospital transports. You know, it's not solving problems if we're taking people to the jailhouse or to the hospital that don't want to go. And so it's important for us to kind of make sure we're measuring that type of metric as a key performance indicator for us moving forward. In the amendment, it does that primarily, it allows us, and we'll talk a little bit about some of the advantages they'll provide, Taros will provide the civilian emergency medical technician under this proposed amendment that will staff the CARE unit, and the firefighter EMT will stay on shift, and we will, that's the big, big change, we'll put a civilian EMT, and we'll talk about how that might be beneficial in a second. And then for us, also, retain that FFD oversight of the program. We want to continue to coordinate the medical protocols, the dispatch services. I will tell you this, these types of adaptive responses do not occur in communities that do not have progressive dispatch services, and our police department and our dispatch has really gone with us on this journey to try to improve our ability to send the right unit to the call. And really important part of that, we've kind of brokered that go-between, and then we also are the go-between on the medical coordination with respect to the receiving facilities and so forth. I think it's important that we retain that because we think that's part of what's made this successful so far. Next slide, please.
It also speaks to the professionalism and skill of our dispatchers.
It does indeed. It does indeed. So, what we think is accomplished by what's been proposed, and I'll just take you from left to right, improve the mental health, behavioral health care and response for our vulnerable population. Improvement comes in the fact that we'll have behavioral health employer-based EMTs. In other words, skill sets that come from the behavioral health provider to mental health provider, skill sets provided by them, they can have a behavioral mental health emphasis and also be EMTs. We think that's a big plus for the clients. Continue to divert calls resulting in hospital transports and/or arrests, that's a big, important part that this amendment continues to support. Improve the team consistency oversight, skill sets for the clients by providing a single employer in the unit. So now, the EMT, the medical side, is being coordinated with same employer, same overhead, medical direction. Tell you what happens if a CARE unit with a Taros, with a Taros, all Taros crew, if they encounter an EMS call. They're going to be on the, continue to be on the radio system for the fire department, they're going to notify us they have an emergency, and Flag Fire is going to come with a paramedic response, and we're going to enter that just like we would any other medical emergency in the community. And so that is assured by what's being recommended here. And finally, there have been some adverses- And finally, there have been some adverse impacts of the staffing of the care unit with respect to taking firefighters that we've taken out of the academy, we've taught them to go into high-risk environments, spend a lot of time getting them ready for that. And then, in some cases, we're taking them and our newest employees, we're saying, we need you on a behavioral health mission unit. And it has created morale issues, it has created retention issues and it has created recruitment issues for us as well. So, without walking away from the success of the program, this amendment gives us the ability to continue that and solve that problem as well. I'm pressing the button. So, in summary, the recommendation to amend the contract with Terrors, adjusting the staffing model is to achieve this improved effectiveness for the clients as well as for the firefighters. And so, we, we'd like to talk to you about thoughts and concerns you might have about that.
Thank you. Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation and thank you for the continued work that you're all doing as, as part of this program. I've had the benefit of writing with the care unit and, and seeing firsthand the joint effort to meet those community needs as well as opportunities to see the work just out in the community by, by being part of the community and seeing that important work. I think also, in the midst of the ride-along that I did with the team, I had the benefit of, of being able to speak directly with the team members and hear some of those concerns that you're bringing forward here and that are, are being addressed through this proposed amendment. So, I want to commend the full team for, for bringing this forward and for rising to meet the need of the community and, and recognize the heart that the team members have for meeting that need and serving the community as well as the heart that they are, are sharing for the work that they've been pulled from in order to provide this service and recognizing the impact. The work that I do outside of council now very much focuses in the behavioral health field. And so, I recognize this as, as something of a two-way street when it comes to not only meeting the needs of community members who are in need of care, but also recognizing the need to take care of the team members themselves and make sure that they are not being overtaxed or, or applied in the wrong situations or demoralized in, in some of the work that they're trying to do. So, I very much support this, this call for an amendment. I see it as both making sure that we're, as you said, applying the right tools to the right situations, but also recognizing the team members as, as more than just tools, being used to address these situations and, and recognizing them for the vital work that they've trained to do, that they want to do, and finding ways to support them and being able to do that. So, very appreciative of, of you all bringing this forward and, yeah, I, I understand this is more of just a discussion item tonight, but definitely very much in support of this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. I echo a lot of what Councilmember House was saying. This was a new idea, birthed not too long ago, and I love seeing how we just keep evolving and not get stuck on, oh, we should have did it this other way, or I wish I would have known now what I, or know back then what I know now. So, I'm fully supportive of this, this makes total sense now, you know, maybe not a year or so ago, but now it just, for all the, the points that you brought out and we've had this discussion a little while ago, I think this is the next evolution to how we continue to bring this type of care to our most vulnerable community members and, and help out our team, team members. Knowing, you know, especially firefighters, police officers, they want to go out and, you know, put out a fire or, you know, stop a, a bank robber and sometimes just, even though it's, it's invaluable work, it's not what they signed up for and we don't want to lose them because you, you want people that have a heart. And not that they don't, but that this was their goal and their mission to do this kind of service. And I know that it takes sometimes a unique individual, so I applaud you for bringing this forward and you'll have my full support.
Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, and I too am, am glad you're bringing this to us tonight. I have a quick question and then a comment. I'm wondering if there is a cost benefit or not a benefit to this new model? And I would like to see this come back in like six months to a year and just kind of give an update to council, how is the new model working if this does pass? I am very supportive of it. I'm glad you're bringing it to us. I, it makes total sense. But I think having an update and kind of keeping council in tune as to how, how this goes if it, if it moves forward. So, those are my question and comment.
I can address those. I'm going to look at my boss for, as I, as I attempt to address one or two. I think a six-month return is really very reasonable. We're just as concerned. We want to know we're not falling off mission by the changes that we introduced. And so, very reasonable, we'd like to do that. With respect to the financial elements, there, I will tell you, I've been very pleased with Terrors' really sharpening the pencil, as I like to tell Brian a lot, but they've done a really good job of bringing this improvement capability to us in a, in a way that I think is very reasonable. Yes, it'll be an increased contract cost. The predominant amount of that falls within budget and there is a, a bit of a, there is a bit of a shortfall that in my estimation, we'll probably be able to be handled administratively with the budget team, city manager staff. It is that fractional.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm supportive of this program and I'm really glad to see that you're continuing to keep your eye on it and trying to figure out how to make it work even better. So, I'm supportive, totally supportive.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, I just, I, I'm totally in, on, on board with this. What's the timeline for getting the, the firefighters off the unit and hiring the people that you need? So, what's going to be the, the lag time?
Thank you. We haven't had a plan sort of written out for that, but I would imagine it wouldn't take long. There might be a transition period where we sometimes have the firefighter and sometimes have our own EMT. I would anticipate maybe three to four months.
And I'm assuming that when this, when we vote on this, that the firefighters will be informed as quickly as possible?
Probably watching.
I suspect that there are people watching this very meeting. You know, just to add on to the, the response, we, we've got to, we've got a great idea. We've got to get attorneys involved now and they're great people, but it's a, it's a process. We've got to make sure that we develop this in acceptable terms to protect the community as well as Terrors will have concerns as well. We've got a little bit of that work to do, but the, the team is ready to go. And then certainly, you know, recruitment and retention, everybody's just having a great time with recruitment these days. So, we understand and we've, we've had preliminary discussions with city attorney that whatever the contract look like, looks like, it's got to, it's got to provide flexibility for us to help Terrors get in the game, when they can get in the game as fast as they can. But this isn't necessarily going to be a clean handoff where, okay, this is the day that the staffing changes. We're going to have to be adaptive, we're going to have to be flexible and we will. And, you know, I would think that I have every confidence that Terrors will staff up. We've given the contract, acceptable contract, we'll move forward as fast as we possibly can, but we better be flexible because what we don't want to do is have the, the unit slip off, slip off the plate.
I'd like to thank all the firefighters for taking on this big project in the midst of everything else you have going on, being willing to, to accept this and figure out a way to make it work. So, thank you all. I rode along with the care unit as well and it's phenomenal and I'm so glad that we invested in it. The call that we happened to have was one that neither an EMT or a firefighter, firefighter was necessarily needed. It was, it was strict mental health call and, but just, I'm so impressed with the team and I'm so grateful to you all. So, I'm hearing support for you moving forward with this and we look forward to the update.
Thank you for your time. We'll work and try to get a draft agreement in front of you as, as early as we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we are down to open call to the public. And I do not see any. All right. So, then we're informational items too from mayor, council and staff and future agenda item requests. This time, I'm going to start down here with Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick things. So, first, for maybe community members who don't know why we're having a meeting on Monday instead of our usual Tuesday, I know many of us are heading down to the Arizona League of Cities and Towns Conference tomorrow, looking forward to that. And secondly, just going back to the conversation that we had about the co-talkers, I know that there have been efforts over the years to preserve and institutionalize as, as a landmark or, or something, the El Pueblo Motel. And I'm just wondering if those processes are still underway, if that's something that the city has the means to support or, or anything along those lines? So, I am introducing it as a future agenda item request, but it, it could just be an update if there's information on that that the city has to provide. Thank you.
Thank you for asking that. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. I will be going to the league this week as well and I'll have more of an update next week at the meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Stacy. Well, I'm doing something out of the ordinary here. Over the break, I went up and visited a bunch of family members, including my daughter. And I, most of you have probably seen this war memorial, which is right across the street in the park. So, why would I bring this up? Well, I found out that my daughter's husband, my son-in-law, was the person that actually designed this and pushed it forward and got it to happen. He showed me newspaper clippings of him and Senator DeCincini at the commemoration or at the inauguration, the ceremony, whatever you call it. And so, I just want to put a word out for him. His name is Mr. Bridley. And anyway, I'm just very pleased to share that with the community. I'm so proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor?
I don't have much to share. I will be going to the league conference this week and look forward to participating with our delegation, all of you fellow councilmembers, including some of our, our leadership team, which will be there as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Yes, Mayor, did you send me a note about Kinsey?
I did. That it's going to be on next week's agenda, I believe, if it's still, okay.
Okay, all right. That would be my only thing. And then, the last thing is that Sipping with the Symphony is this weekend and there are still 47 tickets left.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews?
Well, I too will be down in Phoenix. I hear it's going to cool off to under 110 for the League of Towns and Cities. I look forward to that always. And last week, had our first session with Flynn Brown and then the next week, we have another one and we have a lot of conferences and stuff and they're all informative and I enjoy going to.
Thank you. Okay, I've got a couple of updates. This summer, I was so happy to host several summer camps, including FUSD's Camp I Want to Go. There's probably 30 students, they were ages four and five, and they all sat up here and once they discovered that there were microphones, hilarity ensued. It was so, so awesome. And for any parents who aren't aware of all of the programs that are going on over the summer for kids, the Boys and Girls Club invited me in to see what they're doing. Big Brothers, Big Sisters came here. So, it was just a fun, child-filled summer. I was so pleased to see my colleagues, the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Matthews at the Flynn Brown Issue Day on Friday. I drove down to be on a panel and it's just, it's, it's exciting to see them there and going through the program, which is such an incredibly worthwhile program. Want to remind people that the Flagstaff Festival of Science kicks off on September 20th and tickets are already available for the keynote speaker. I want to congratulate the FUSD Foundation on a fantastic supply drive that they did at Staples. They have filled up a teacher's closet at one of the schools and teachers from all over the district can come and pick up supplies. That was fun. And Tinkertopia just celebrated their sixth birthday, so congratulations to Dr. Alice and all the volunteers and staff for Tinkertopia. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, welcome back from a very well-deserved retreat or recess, not a retreat, retreats to follow. We will resume with our city manager reports at your next work session, which I think is the week after next. We look forward to spending time with most of you at the league conference this week in Phoenix. I do want to take opportunity to mention, you know, we had some very compelling discussion from the public about the situation on Mead Lane and the drainage. We actually have been having this discussion internally for, preceded the monsoon season this year, recognizing that there are some stormwater challenges there and there are steps in process. You can expect a communication from staff, probably a presentation in the very near future. We will inform our fellow residents of that so that they can come in and partake in that. I just want to impress upon you that the wheels are in motion on that and we, of course, recognize the priority that it is. So, stay tuned on that, it's coming your way.
Thank you. And when you, you brought up the city manager report, so the, the transmittal that you sent to city council, you know, with some of the highlights, I thought that that was so wonderful. And I've talked to different councilmembers about how great it would be to have a document that's just got a couple of highlights from every department that has something to highlight because often, someone will ask me a question and I'll remember that we got a presentation, but I can't remember which meeting it was. And it would just be so helpful to have something all together with kind of the latest for different departments and not to add another layer on to all of the work that staff does. But I'm wondering if there's some way to make something like that available?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your comments and thank you for restating the comments that you shared in a very nice email after that budget transmittal letter went out. Yeah, I think there's always opportunity to, you know, replicate that and, and have more updates to council in that kind of format. It goes without saying with the budget transmittal letter, I mean, there's It goes without saying, with the budget transmittal letter, I mean, there's a lot of content to our budget, a lot, and it spans hundreds of pages. The intent of the transmittal letter is to kind of give a very high level, what's going on with the city, where have we been, where are we going? You know, it's, it's fiscal policy, yes, it's an update on all the budget stuff, but it's much more than that. Uh, this year, you know, we talked a lot about the capital projects because they're front and center right now, so I do appreciate your comments, and yeah, we can definitely provide more information like that to the council if you think it'll be helpful.
Thank you. And even if it's, even if it's in some kind of a table format where things could be changed, and something that just came to my mind is, you know, people will ask, well, when is that project going to be finished, or when is that project going to be started? And to have, I mean, I can dig through things to get that information, but if we had something that was right at our fingertips, I think that that would be great.
Yep, we'll make that happen.
Okay, thank you. And Rose, you are welcome, the Code Talkers event was outstanding. All right, well, if we don't have anything else, we are adjourned.